All right, yes, we're gonna start. We're getting rolling here. We've got the city council workshop today. Who's leading that?
How's Hey Charity, I think we're getting a lot of feedback from noise in the room.
Oh, okay. Do you want me to mute? I can mute myself.
Maybe mute, but then, you know, we'll have to remind you to unmute when you want to talk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to, we'll let Brian take one first.
All right, Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Licky.
Here.
Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Crocott.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Timbush.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Okay, and I'm gonna turn this over to our city attorney, Peter Watts, to lead the discussion, but I just thought I'd mention that Mayor Drinkwine is not able to be with us tonight. He's not feeling well, and so Counselor Hughes would be our council president, but she is joining us on Zoom, so she is deferring to our past president, Counselor Strobel, who will be leading our meeting tonight. And we have Peter Watts, our city attorney here. We have some discussion topics that I thought would be helpful for him to go over, but we'll just, it can kind of be free flowing with how, you know, questions you have or topics that Peter wants to cover.
Sure. So during one of the, one of the times I was here, I noticed there was a subdivision. Well, there was going to be a future subdivision, and there was an application for that, and there was a lot of there was a lot of opposition. And once you see that begin happening, it's going to keep happening. I mean, it's going to depend, you know, based on where it is in the city and those sort of developments, but once you get kind of organized opponents to land use applications, it's usually a trend that continues. And at the same time, and this is something that members of the public often don't understand, this state's been getting more and more prescriptive with cities about what we have to allow and a basis for when, when we can deny a land use application, or when we can't, and what we can consider. And there've been some changes made recently around a concept of needed housing, which is actually defined incredibly broadly. And also some interpretations of some other statutes that resulted in some pretty significant attorney's fees that the city of Salem had to pay out. And so, and that case came out this past summer. So I wanted to just go through the clear and objective criteria and other elements, and this should be, this should aid with a couple of things. One is that you'll know when you can deny, or when you're required to approve, and hopefully it will allow you to explain it to members of the public that may want you to consider things that aren't, you know, that can't be considered. And when you can ask for more information, so like a conditional letter of map provision from FEMA, something like that. Those can be a traffic study, some, those sort of things to get more information. If the, if there are issues that are raised by neighbors or project opponents, and also so that you can explain to them when you can take action and when you can't, because, you know, sometimes if they understand that your hands are bound, they're a little bit more accepting of what you're trying to do, or what the penalties are if you don't do it. So when you're doing a subdivision of applications, it's what's called a quasi judicial hearing. So that's when you're sitting, is if you're a judge, and versus when you're doing something of of citywide interest, so like something like a transient lodging tax or something like that, that's a legislative decision because it would apply citywide. So these applications for quasi judicial land use decisions are, it's O R S 197 797. And the, whether it's the planning commission, or a hearings board, or officer, city council, you're all bound by the same requirements, which is that you receive information during the hearing. We want to see, everyone wants to see transparency so that everybody's working off of the same information. To the extent that you get contacted by somebody about the application outside of the hearing, it's what's referred to as ex parte contact. That doesn't mean that you can't hear it, but you should disclose on the record. You know, I was at the store, somebody approached me regarding this subdivision, they were very opposed to it. And they, you know, said that it would cause their yard to flood. There's nothing that I heard during that conversation that would mean that I can't objectively hear it. So if you hear something that makes it seem so you can't, you know, objectively come to a conclusion or weigh the evidence, then at that point, you would need to recuse yourself. If you can't objectively hear it, then just put that on. The test for bias in Oregon is, it's extreme bias. It takes something like, there was a city counselor who said, I was elected to this body in order to approve this application. So if you say something like that on the record, which would be a really bad idea, then, then at that point, you should recuse yourself. And if, for whatever reason, you, you if people say, hey, I, you know, he seems to be an opponent of this, you can say, you know, I have certain duties to do this job, and one of them is to hear these fairly and objectively, and I'm able to do that. And if, if you put those words in, chances are the Court of Appeals will say that you're fine. They understand that people can have political positions, but that doesn't mean that they can't objectively make a decision based on facts. So for ex parte, it's really important to have disclosure. If, if in the past you oppose something, there's a case where there was a guy who had been involved in lawsuits fighting liquefied natural gas projects that then became a county commissioner. The fact that he had sued over them in the past made people question whether he was biased. He said, no, he wasn't. Did he knew had a job to do, and he was going to do it. Then he voted no, and then they sued, and it went to the Court of Appeals, who said he, he said he could be objective, we have no reason to disbelieve him. So kind of the, what you can consider is in that sub one, such issues, if people are opposing something, they, and they raise issues accompanied by evidence, it's whether it's sufficient to allow you to to have a for the, it's, again, the overarching, and I should have brought my reading glasses, but the overarching concept is fairness. So if an opponent says, you know, I'm worried this will flood, and here's why I'm worried this is, will flood, I have pictures of this field, and it's underwater, then the applicant would, you know, be able to rebut that and say, you know, we have a cut fill plan. But if they don't have a hydrology report or something like that, you could say, we really need to see a hydrology report to make sure that what you're saying is accurate, and that these neighbors shouldn't be worried about either an upstream or downstream event. So that's the kind of evidence you should ask for. Frankly, it, it makes it easier for the applicant so long as they have, you know, get one. And it helps everyone understand and be able to make an informed informed decision. Same thing with something like a traffic report, if it's a large subdivision, and they're constrained roads, or or concern about traffic, that's something that a traffic consultant could be brought in. If there are dueling experts, then what I would ask of you, or what any lawyer would ask of you, is to the extent that you believe one expert's more credible than the other, do you explain your reasoning? So if it goes up to appeal, and if both parties are bringing in experts, the odds of it getting appealed are probably pretty high, then the goal would be to explain they made this finding because they found this evidence by this expert more credible for these reasons, and maybe it's the person's experience, maybe it's, you know, whatever it is. It's the opponent's expert, you know, has 20 years more experience, maybe has this extra degree, whatever it is. I find that compelling, more compelling than the other side. So if we're, if we're looking at procedural errors, and this used to be the grounds for appeals a lot more often, but Luba's kind of clamped down on that, is if someone's saying you did something wrong, Luba recognizes that everyone's human beings, that during a process, somebody can make a mistake. And so they look at they, to decide whether something's the basis for a remand, it's the petitioners have to demonstrate that the error prejudice their substantial rights. So if someone shows up and is like, you didn't send me the notice, and this has happened quite a bit, I didn't get the notes for this hearing. What Louis said is, well, the fact that you attended and offered public testimony is evidence that you weren't materially prejudiced. So where we have to be a little bit careful is that if they say, I haven't had time to hire a lawyer or bring in an expert, at that point, we'll want to hold the record open to allow them to do that, and then we have to allow the applicant rebuttal opportunity. And that's generally either a seven day or 10 day for them in order to meaningfully participate. And then the applicant to rebut is as far as other procedural errors or other evidence, if somebody believes something's happened that hasn't happened, they need to raise it, it's referred to as raise it or waive it. If you don't raise it, you can't use it as a basis for appeal. They, what a good idea for counsel is to ask them, okay, do you, do you believe you have sufficient, a sufficient opportunity in order to offer evidence or what have you? What do you need? It needs to be fair to the applicant as well. So if someone asks for a lengthy amount of time, that's not going to necessarily be fair. If they were to say, you know, I, my lawyer said he can't review it until later this week, you know, I'd ask you to leave the record open seven days, that's going to be granted, just outright, probably.
Is, is seven days a pretty standard time, or if they come back and say 45 days, or something along those lines?
Well, seven, a lot of code sections say seven, and a lot of people just default to seven because the entire application has to be done in 120 days, either 120 or 150, depending on it. And so if we don't get it done in that amount of time, or the applicant doesn't agree to like, to stop the clock, basically, to press pause on the clock, then there's a chance that the council or planning commission can't get through the hearing as efficient amount of time. And if that doesn't happen, if you don't get it done in 120 days, the application's granted. So the clock is for the benefit of the applicant, not for the benefit of the city. So it's on them to decide whether to grant us the pause or not. And and if they say no, which doesn't happen a ton, but can happen, particularly if council's about to turn over. So if it's like at the end of the year, and they're going to be some new city councilors, I just had that happen in another jurisdiction where they're like, no, we'll pause it through the end of the year, but we don't want to educate an entire new city council on this application, so we're not going to go beyond that. And so we scheduled some some special meetings, and we're able to get through the application. But and then the, the opponents then were claiming that they had been harmed by that. And, you know, some of that is, and we'll get into this through the needed housing, but some of it, again, goes back to, did they have an adequate opportunity? Were they materially harmed? So in a case where a city might impose a condition that is responsive to the, what the opponents are asking for. So an example would be a larger minimum lot size. For planned developments, it's not unusual to have more clustered housing, more open space. Sometimes, though, people are like, well, the lot's not big enough. So if the, if the council then imposes a condition, something like the, taking the minimum lot size from 3,300 square feet to 4,000, which would reduce the total number of units, then I, I think it would be hard for the, for the opponents to say there was any sort of material harm. Because what are they going to say? No, we'd rather have the, they've, they would have already made the arguments related to density and minimum lot size. So imposing a condition in response to that, I don't think they could demonstrate that kind of harm, or that their substantial rights had been negatively impacted because they already would have made those legal arguments related to lot sizes too small. And so they could continue to make that at Luba, if you were below the the minimum lot size in the zone. So like, if you guys have a 5,000 square foot minimum lot in your R1, but with the planned unit development, you can go below that. And usually the reason is to preserve open space, or allow the public into it. That usually happens with land that's partially on a floodplain, then they would have, they would be able to still say to Luba, no, the minimum lot for this is 5,000. We made the argument that you should go with 5,000 for these reasons. The fact that they went from 3,300 to four doesn't, you know, doesn't change the fact that we think it should be five. If there is a condition that is to the benefit of the applicant, that opponents haven't had opportunity, then I think at that point, you probably have to open the record back up and allow the opponents, you know, the fair opportunity. Whether that can happen at the city council meeting, or whether you need to give them, you know, some time. And you can, you can continue the, to hear, the hearing to a time certain in the future, which means you don't have to re-notice everything and do all of that.
What, what would be an example of a condition favorable to the applicant?
Like a reduction in minimum lot size, or that they don't have to do a pocket park, or, or anything like that. There, it's increasingly rare that city councilors want more development necessarily, or want smaller minimum lot sizes, but it can't happen. And then if they didn't realize that you were saying, hey, you don't have to give us that pocket park, and you can just take an extra lot, that might be something where someone would say, well, you know, now I am opposed to it because I, or other members of the public might be opposed to it because they're not getting what they want anymore.
So that would be making an exception, probably in the mid-course of, of the, they've turned in the application already, and then we've granted some exceptions.
Yeah. Okay. So, you know, so some of it is, particularly with like planned developments, you'll have the, you know, public space requirements or whatever, and then you'll have the, if you've, if you've allowed those with certain conditions, you've created the precedent there. So if you want to deviate from that precedent one way or the other, you're going to need to explain why you're doing it. Example of that is, in the city of Scapus, they had one called North Fork, where they had small lot sizes, and basically allowed like one car garages with a small driveway. And that development had some major parking problems. You know, because people couldn't have people over to watch the NFL or what have you, where they were parking up and down the streets adjacent to it. So staff took a look at that, and they're like, no, we're going to widen the, we're going to widen the lot size. We're going to require, you know, the garage and then to other, so driveway along and to park two cars on. And the reason that we're, this is still less than what will be required in an R1, but the reason we're doing it is because our experience with this development, not having enough parking, creating sightline problems because people are parking on corners and things of that nature, and negatively impacting other residents. So if you're going to deviate from what you've allowed previously because of precedent, make sure that you tie it to either the geographic features of the parcel, why one is different than the other, or negative community experience associated with what you tried to do. Conversely, if you had said, okay, we'll allow 4,500 square feet, and there were no parking problems or anything like that, the next one that comes in is like, well, we really, this works a lot better with our street network. If it's 4,000 square foot lots, you could say, yeah, you know, in the past, we haven't had any parking issues. And this, these have the two car garage and driveways, and so we don't think there'll be any, so we're willing to take it down to 4,000 square feet. So it's, again, it's the good thing about dirt, particularly in Oregon, is every parcel's different. And so, yeah, you have the precedent, but there might be valid reasons for a departure from that precedent. So just make sure it's on the record, and so they understand why you're doing or not doing it. And that, that leads us to this needed housing, which because of some new case law this summer, and has created kind of a trap for city councils. And we don't know exactly how, we, we have an idea of how this can be used, but it's kind of contrary to the other hearings processes. And if you look at the definitions for needed housing, they are, it is very broad. So needed housing means all housing and land zone for residential use, or mixed residential commercial uses that is determined to meet the need shown for housing within an urban growth boundary, at price ranges and rent levels that are affordable to households within the county with a variety of incomes, including those not limited to households with low incomes, very low incomes, and extremely low incomes, as the terms are being defined in the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And then they list a lot, but basically it's a variety of income ranges, a variety of rental ranges. It kind of seems like it includes any house, arguably any house in a residential or mixed use zone could be needed housing. That interpretation is further supported by the next statute that I included, which is 197 307. Which if you were looking at the title of that, you would be like, well, this only applies to manufactured housing. But then when you actually get into the body of the statute, it, it doesn't, except provided, if you look at sub four, except provided in subsection six of the section, a local government may adopt and deploy only clear and objective standing, standards, conditions and procedures regulating the development of housing, including needed housing. So that, that applies those to all housing types. So needed housing, when you read those two together, they're kind of difficult to reconcile because 303 seems to apply to that whole list of properties, variety of rents, variety of incomes, all those things. And then 307 then says there's needed housing, and then it applies to other housing, including needed housing. So what isn't needed housing? I don't know. I mean, maybe just some insanely expensive house. Or it's, it's our, kind of our best guess. But where, where we start falling into the trap is then if you get to the next section, which is the 197 522, local government to approve partition or construction conditions. Needed housing has the same definition as 197 303, which is extremely broad, and doesn't seem like it's clear and objective for us to be able to say what, what it is. And then if you look at sub three, if an application is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable land use regulations, the local government, prior to making a final decision on the application, shall allow the applicant to offer an amendment or to propose conditions of approval that would make the application consistent with the plan and applicable regulations. If an applicant seeks to amend the application, or propose the conditions of approval, and then it goes through what you need to do. And if you don't do that, then they get attorney's fees. So, and that's the following statute, which is 197. If you look at the 522, if you look at four, it says, a local government shall deny an application that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable land use regulations, and that cannot be made consistent through amendments to the application or imposition of reasonable conditions of approval. So you kind of have to explain why this couldn't be, if you're going to deny it, you have to explain why they can't make it right. And they also have an opportunity to say, we'll do a hydrology report, or we'll do a conditional letter of map revision from FEMA, or we'll do a traffic study. And at that point, we get in kind of this gray area, because members of the, the other people that are in the hearing maybe haven't, won't have had an opportunity to respond to that. If we get it wrong, we're paying their attorney's fees, which can be exorbitant. And they don't tell you exactly how to raise this. It's often not clear to an applicant if the applications, I mean, staff can do, can make a recommendation, and it might still not be apparent to the applicant which way the council's going to go until the, the hearings closed, and the records closed, and you're having a conversation on the application. Yeah.
I was just going to get some talking, but I can I ask a question? Okay, I just wanted to clarify, Peter, this is the kind of thing, that's why Taylor needs, and her department needs so much time as they're going through these land use applications, and they'll often reach out to Peter if they have questions. And I don't know if you want to kind of explain that, because this, this is complex. And if we got into a situation with this, then you would be there to guide us through that along with Taylor, right?
Right, certainly. And, you know, I am, I am at Luba right now on this issue. The record will be submitted tomorrow. The situation was, they rated the needed housing argument. It seemed like the decision might go down. I didn't know whether they were, the planning commission had, had, their recommendation was unanimous. And no one had said anything during that. The people had said stuff like, I understand why people are uncomfortable, but these are the only conditions that we're able to consider. And I don't, basically, I don't understand how someone could say they haven't met him. Like, we had, that applicant had gotten a letter of rap, mapped revision from FEMA. Then they had gotten a conditional letter of map revision based on their site plans. It was, they were doing a cut fill for floodplain. And then we had required them, after phase one of the construction, to get another lomar from FEMA. So the, a lot of people were like, this is going to flood. And in Oregon, you're, you're required to base it on FEMA's data, and FEMA had said it wasn't going to flood. So, yeah, go ahead.
The, is there definitions of needed housing? Is there like percentages of available housing types in those different income levels that they, that would say that you have a needed housing? So, or is it just?
One of, one of the challenges for this, and I think you guys went through a housing needs analysis and buildable land inventory, is that they don't base it, they don't necessarily base their findings off of the actual value of houses. So they would, they value them off of like more traditional, like maybe what they were worth when they were built, or who they'd be available to at the time of sale. And in a community like Estacada, when I first became your city attorney, I mean, you could buy kind of a 1950s house in the downtown area for under 100,000 back in 2010. I mean, we had some abandoned houses and derelict ones that, you know, were kind of, we were worried about, you know, because you don't, you don't want a lot of abandoned houses. Since Since those same houses now, you know, sell for more than three hundred. So if, if you look at what the people purchased them for when they bought them, nineteen ninety five, nineteen eighty five, whenever it was, that's how a lot of, that's how a lot of these consultants determine whether you have enough housing under goal ten, under Oregon land school ten, which is requires a variety of housing at different costs. So if we're looking at needed housing, I mean, it, it would make sense that you would default to that. That sort of housing needs analysis. But there are other people that would say part of the way that you keep the house, keep the cost of existing houses down is by building new houses. So today's luxury house might be three decades from now affordable. So that basically have taken the point that any housing is needed housing. And it kind of seems like Luba agrees with them. Or any apartments are needed housing, even if the rents seem like they're going to be expensive. And then the other thing that, that developers will say, and I think they're being honest when they say it is, all we do during this process, unless they're getting like federal grants or state grants in order to build a certain type of apartment, they know what the lot size is going to be. They don't know what, it's outside of their control, whether they price something at a price and get ten offers on it or not, you know? They can think based on current market conditions that it might be worth, you know, under four hundred thousand. By the time it comes online, it might be worth five fifty. And so they, it's like in a free market economy, which was what the housing market is in some respects. You know, they, they could intend, they could think it's going to sell for something and it wouldn't. And what I found, you know, during, there was part of my career where I represented a lot of developers doing private side landing stuff. Is that really the only two variables are the cost of the dirt and the system development charges? Because the cost per square foot to build, you know, there can be luxury finishes or something like that that might add eight percent to the overall price. But the cost of woods, cost of wood, the, the cost of windows or the cost of windows. And so what you end up seeing then is if the cost of the dirt that they purchase is a lot more expensive, the only way they're going to generate a profit is to build a larger house, which is why you'll see, if you compare the houses that were built in Happy Valley and like the eighties to the houses that are built now, the houses, most of the houses built now are substantially larger. And it's because it's not just market demand, it's that in order for the houses to appraise, they need to be a certain amount of square feet and the developers cost, by the time they get into the dirt is high enough that they're just going to build larger houses. And you're going to see the same thing here. So as, as other jurisdictions don't have land inventory, and I got a call from the mayor of Moala a couple of weeks ago. My understanding is they're down to twenty six net developable acres of residential, which is not any for a city of ten thousand. And I didn't know their population was ten thousand. But that's kind of what I'm hearing from a lot of jurisdictions is that their supply is tight. So you saw Canby started getting built out and then it started going further south ninety nine east. And now, you know, it's to Woodburn and that, that the houses that are being built in Woodburn are larger houses now. And you guys are going to see larger houses. And they're, they're tools that consultants will say you can use. But really, I've not found any of them to be effective. The truth of the matter is in order to get a traditional mortgage, you can't have more than a two, a duplex. You're not going to be able to get one for a triplex or a fourplex. So there are people that will have three units and the third one doesn't have a stove. And then the people will have a hot plate, which allows the owners to call it a duplex and get a traditional mortgage. But a lot of these tools that planners or experts from the states say can be used. I mean, you can't, you just can't get financing for them under a traditional mortgage because you, in their mind, you go from being a homeowner to a landlord. And so the type of financing you get would be something closer to what someone buying an apartment would get. And then i- unless you have that type of housing and proof of rents, you're not going to be able to make the case to the lender for having high enough rents or to justify. And that's just the market reality. Yeah.
You'd, you'd mentioned early on about the clear and objectives criteria.
Yeah.
Who, who sets that? I know we've got our comprehensive plan, but what else goes into that? And can that be altered by the city at all? Or are we bound by guidelines from the state and county?
Um, so things like design standards can definitely be altered by the city. So the use of materials, saying some materials are usable and some aren't. The idea of the clear and objective criteria is that a developer who's never been to the city of Estacada can read through your code and understand how to plot a subdivision in a manner that would be approved. So let's assume there is a dry, flat parcel of land that never floods is shaped as a square. So they wouldn't have to get any conditional, you know, special conditions due to the topo. They would be able to say, they would look at it and say, okay, the, the minimum lot size for this is five thousand and the maximum light size for it's eight thousand square feet. The street has to be this wide. The sidewalk has to be that wide. You know, the housing density per acre needs to be a, a net developable acre needs to be here. Here, city of Estacada is my pre-app and plan. Here's how I'm meeting all of your guidelines. And then our staff would say yes. So that's kind of the idea. Yeah.
Can we put into our comprehensive plan requirements that our sewer system be, meet certain be at or below certain use standards, law enforcement be of certain systemic standards, things like that? We put that in our requirements. So like, we have to have X many officers able to cover X amount of time in order for to meet the, the need of whatever. We put that in our comprehensive plan as being clear and objectionable to it?
So that's an interesting question. The way that, the way that water sewer capacity goes is you have to grant them unless there are factors that would allow you to do a moratorium. So like if you're, if you're, if you're maxed out on, on your water or you're maxed out on your sewer, then at that point you would just, you would do a development moratorium that says until we have these upgrades, we're not going to grant any more developments because we need to we need to serve our current residents. As far as law enforcement, that's a really interesting question and not something that I've seen necessarily in comprehensive plans before. One of the differences though between the housing that was, that is built now versus the housing that was built before measures five and fifty is that you get, as a general rule, you get more tax revenue off of what was, what is new. And that's because measure five and fifty did a look back to the value. And I think it was nineteen eighty five. And then the maximum you can increase is three percent a year. So even though a house might sell for three hundred thousand instead of a hundred thousand, if the value is pegged at that hundred thousand, then the point of sale doesn't matter. You just get three percent a year. And the houses that we've been seeing get built, it can, they keep, you can be, the city being getting three, can get three X more in property taxes than they will be getting from something previously built. So it would allow for the SDCs, and that's in addition to the SDCs that they pay. So that does allow for better amenities and more law enforcement. Because it ups the average.
Let me offer it, but my question is, can we put a requirements in our comprehensive plan that in order to be built, they must meet those certain standards at the time of an application? Or something along those lines?
So your question would be if, if we've got one officer per thousand people, we want to maintain.
Or something along those lines or response time or average response time or something along those lines. I don't know what standard would be in there, but can we put something in there that would require in order to be approved that the, all law enforcement has to show by stack statistics or something that it's meeting a minimal threshold or something?
So the comprehensive plan is all land use related things. If, if there are new houses that have been built and let's say they're paying six hundred ninety five dollars a house per year and, and city taxes, then you guys can determine how you would use that tack, that additional tax revenue that's being generated by them. So if you chose from a budgetary standpoint to add an officer, you could do that, but they don't get to control how you guys get to spend the property taxes that they paid. You're entitled to spend it on, on what you want. Of course, along with the vision and values of people.
And I get what you're saying with that, but my question still stands. Can that be something you put in there? I know they can't control we spend the money. But can we, the thing is that like, for example, there's a statistical verifiable way to show that takes you about a year and a half to get an officer from new to, to bring them in. We are experiencing this now. So what my question is, can we set standards that if the time the application, they're not meeting, we can deny? Until, you know, whatever that's, even if we can show at the time that, hey, we have officers on order or whatever it might be. Can we, can, is that a standard that we can put in place? And I know we don't have to know the details, but would that be something we can put in place, whether in comprehensive plan or something?
Probably, probably not, because ultimately the developer would have no control over how you spend the money. And if you maintain the law enforcement at the level below what will be required, you basically have a long-term moratorium in place that's outside of their control. And so I think that that would probably not. I mean, we could ask DLC, any, any comprehensive plan amendment has to be approved by the State Department of Land Conservation Division. So we could ask the LCD staff whether that sort of element could be added to your call plan. My guess is they probably wouldn't want to do it because again, it's, it's completely outside of the developer's control.
Counselor Hughes has a question up there.
Thanks so much. My question is along the same lines as counselor Litties, but but it refers more to the school district. Now I know the school district and the city of Estacada are two separate entities. But I get a lot of chatter and feedback from people saying, we just don't have room in the schools, especially the elementary schools are starting to get crowded. So is that something we could put in our comprehensive plan for that? Or is that just completely on the school district and we have no say in, in how that functions?
Well, so that what you can do with the school district is in Oregon, a school district can adopt a construction excise tax. And what that is, and they, what they need to do is do a long-term facilities plan. So they kind of have the roadmap for their future. And you guys would review that. And then, and I don't know if you have a CET right now that's going to the school district.
We do.
But so then they can increase that on an annual basis. It's actually tagged to inflation. And what I've noticed from a lot of jurisdictions is they don't raise them. It's, I think it's, it's around a dollar fifty a square foot at this point. And so that, that is one thing that you can work with the school district in order to help, help them generate more revenue. So like a, a three thousand square foot house would generate forty five hundred dollars in construction excise tax for the city, or excuse me, for the school district. That's tagged on to their, you know, the fees that they pay, their SDCs. And that's applicable whether the people buying the house have children in school or not. So every house that gets built would have to pay that construction excise tax. So that's, that's one way, that's kind of the state's way of making sure that school districts receive money for, that they need to kind of expand their facilities. So again, we could have the conversation with LCDC, but my guess is that they would say no because we don't know who the end buyer of the house is going to be. It might be a family, but it might be a retired couple. And so we don't know what impact there would be on the school system associated with development.
Yeah. Would the same go with the fire service areas too?
So the fire service areas can have their own SDCs that are paid and their own rules that the coverage for fire, what it impacts is your fire insurance. So if their response time is within a certain amount of time, then then you're, you pay X in tax and, and, you know, in insurance in fire, excuse me, I shouldn't say tax, I meant insurance. In fire insurance, if they have higher coverage, then you pay less. The way you can, if you have concerns about about fire coverage or new subdivisions getting built that might raise other people's taxes, one thing you can require is for them to add sprinklers to the houses. So then they viewed completely differently by the the insurers. Yeah.
What about the, like the will of the people type thing here? What if there's a majority of people petition or show consensus that they don't want a development? Is there a way for them to vote, raise an issue, request, put a, put a moratorium on a ballot, something like that, that the people have the power to do? If there's a majority of people that don't want it, like, as you know, it's a big thing in Estacada, people are tired of the building.
Yeah.
So what can the people do? What, what do they do that, that would empower us or help us to do what they're looking for?
I mean, there is, on this, and this is what's so frustrating for city councils and for members of the public. There is very little you can do in order to stop housing developments unless, again, they're clear and objective factors that they're not meeting.
It was just a few years ago that every annexation got voted on by the city or by the people in the city and the state took that away from us and, and said that, no, you can't vote. If somebody wants to annex, they have to meet the criteria. Right? Is that how?
Right. So it used to be that, and it varied from city to city, but it wasn't uncommon for cities to have what's called double vote for annexation. So both the people that lived in the area that wanted to annex would vote for whether they wanted to annex or not. And then the city voters would vote for whether they wanted the annexation to happen. In the legislature, the legislature ended that ability, took away the citywide vote. The people that want to come into the city can still vote. The city of Corvallis challenged that. It went up to on appeal and was ultimately upheld. Yeah.
But is this describing relative to outright uses in zoning? In the comprehensive plan, things that are outright uses?
So if it's
A two-part question.
Yeah, if it's an outright use, then it's probably not coming in front of the city council. The, the staff is, the staff's just seeing if it applies or not. This really more comes up when they're looking for a deviation in some, some way from what is an outright allowed use. So if you require six thousand square foot lot, you have side setbacks of twenty feet, you have a front setback of fifty, whatever it is. You have a maximum height of X. Then in, in there, there would be subdivisions where they're just granted because they're not asking for any sort of variance or any sort of condition. The ones that come in front of council generally, well, the annexation comes in front of you and then you, you really can't do anything unless you can't serve them. But yeah, if it's outright allowed use in there, completely consistent with all code provisions, then there's not much.
They don't come, yeah, they don't still come in front of the council.
What, what, what was it?
Don't all subdivisions come in front of the council regardless of whether, what the conditions are?
Taylor might be able to answer that.
Yeah, I was, I just raised my hand. I was going to chime in. Currently, our our code has subdivisions coming before the planning commission and then the city council. Any subdivision comes before the city council, which is not necessarily how all cities do it. And that's because some cities have adopted clear and objective standards for residential development. Our code still has Clear and objective standards for residential development. Our code still has um, a lot of. Standards and criteria that are not so clear and objective. Um, and so it would not yet be. A very good idea for us to try to have staff be approving subdivisions because there is still some discretion. Um, just with the gaps that there are in our current code, but um. If we get to a point where, you know, maybe we go through a clear and objective code audit, um. We get to a point where our code for residential subdivisions is clear and objective, then that could turn into. A staff decision or just a planning commission decision and then it wouldn't all, wouldn't always go up to city council, um. Just because there wouldn't be much discretion for you all to be um applying in those situations unless it was. Like a a planned unit development where they go through that, um, they opt for that more discretionary, um. Kind of pathway because they want more flexibility on certain standards or something.
And of all the areas of your code, the one that I think where you have the most legal risk and the one that. Needs the most immediate attention is your residential. Just because the the legislature just keeps taking away from cities, basically. I mean, it's just like. We technically still have home rule, but they declared a housing emergency. They passed all these statutes that give people. Attorney's fees. Um, the Luba appeal I have right now, the applicant's attorney who. Has been practicing for ten years, um, is billing out at six hundred dollars an hour. So the, if we were to lose at Luba, if we were to deny. Or impose the unreasonable condition and then lose at Luba. We're probably looking at between sixty and ninety thousand dollars in attorney's fees that we'd be having to pay. The applicant and, you know, modest meeting cities just don't have. That kind of cash for that kind of purpose. And that's why I think that having the clear and objective. Criteria really benefits everyone. It benefits them knowing what they can build and what they can't build. It benefits you because you're saying, look, we have no discretion. If you look at our code, the street needs to be this wide, the sidewalk needs to be this wide, that lots need to be that wide. Um, there needs to be X amount of open space. They literally check every box. Were required to, you know, our staff is required to approve them or, um. You know, we are, we cannot do something that would expose us to legal liability. Yeah.
So.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Taylor.
I was just going to add, um, in response to a couple of the questions earlier, um, I. I was just recently in a session hosted by DLCD and. Um, the community services manager, or I don't know his title, Gordon Howard, um, land use guy. Um, was talking about the clear and objective requirement and something that they repeated over and over again was that. Clear and objective standards um don't necessarily have to be easy. They just have to be clear and objective. So it is, it is something that the city can think. I mean, it would, it would take, you know, it would be a process, but um, you know, think hard about developing. Standards that are clear and objective, that are legally defensible, um, but that also. Um, you know, require developers to to meet kind of higher standards, you know, that might. Um, make it a little bit harder, that might discourage development, make it a little bit harder. For growth to happen as quickly as it has been happening. Um, so that's just something to consider. It is, um. Possible to have clear and objective standards that the city can, you know, um. Kind of use its discretion in developing and adopting those standards, even when once the standards are adopted, you're not using discretion. At each, at the time of each land use approval, if that makes sense.
And that, that's kind of what I was going to touch on there too, but any, any. Changes that we make to the comp plan, it sounds like it needs to go up and be approved by, is it the DLC?
DLC staff and then depending on the scope, it might actually go to the, the, if. It could go to LCDC usually.
So if if a city were to say, um, you know, we want minimum twenty thousand square foot lot sizes in our R one zone. Um.
So we would, if you guys remember measure forty-nine that that was a few years ago. A lot of times it just applied to measure thirty-seven claims. Um, but if you're passing code changes that restrict. The amount of lots that someone can get, um, that can trigger a measure forty-nine claim unless their health and safety. So if like, see, it's steeply sloped or something where you make those findings, then you might be able to do that. But you have to be really careful if you're reducing the total number of lots they're going to get.
All right, Council Lick, then we got about five more minutes total here.
Um, so what about, uh, so we have a public and traffic safety committee. What would it be possible to have them be a step in the process where they need to get approval because. Things like we recently had a fire two years ago and making sure that we have, you know, good evacuation routes and safeties of possible check there and. Also traffic and things. I know we have traffic studies and stuff, but um, having them be a step in to review it. And approve before they can get, come, brings us way to the council or I think if they have a finding.
Probably not. The two, the two below the planning commission um level, the. Um, the two boards that I've seen, um. Um, I've seen, you know, pass muster basically are, um, uh. If something's a conditional use, having an architectural review committee. Um, and again, we'd have to be. We'd, we'd want that as tight as possible, but um, and then the, um, if you. If you want variances, um, the city of Portland and other cities. Have a committee where they look at, like, if you wanted to go, it's thirty-five feet and you want to go up to forty. They have a committee that looks at those sort of things and and makes a decision about whether to um, grant. Those sort of changes or not. But like a. Uh, I get why you would definitely think that there's kind of a nexus between public safety and it particularly given the fire. But I don't know that LCDC would sign off on that kind of um, committee doing a review. I mean, they really want to keep it as land use based as possible.
So evacuation routes that wouldn't fall under land use base. Identified, documented in the approved evacuation routes.
Um.
We, we could, um, I, if I can chime in again, um, that is definitely something that we. Intend to identify in the transportation system plan update. Um, and so I think we've already talked about how we're, we're going to engage the. Traffic and public safety committee, um, on that and other TSP related. Things, um, but then once, so then once something is adopted into the transportation system plan, um. Those like identified routes that are identified in the TSP, um, that becomes criteria in. Residential development. So, um, what we could do is then, you know, identify those routes and then whatever development standards would be related. To, you know, preserving or ensuring those evacuation routes are functional. Um, we would adopt also into the development code for land divisions or whatever zones we're looking at. Um. But it would not be, it would not be engaging the traffic committee in the land use hearing process.
All right, and I think, I think we got to call it a close here on this, but, you know, good questions. I appreciate the discussion here. And Peter, I appreciate you coming as well too and and uh, addressing us. Would it be all right if we have more questions, if we send them to Melanie and?
Yeah, totally. And I, I think I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna save for at least one item on the agenda, so, um. And again, it, you know, part of this is just that, this, this is a example where. Uh, your representative of your, or your senator, it, it's, I think, important for them to understand this because. It's really counterintuitive and it really takes local control. When you, when you're granting people attorney's fees like this, it really takes local control out of the hands of the, um. Uh, decision makers because city councils or planning commissions become much more risk averse. Um, and, um, you know, home rule. Was supposed to be that, you know, you guys got to decide the vision and values for your community and if the state's prescribing. When you have to say yes, you know, that, that seems like it's, um. On the other hand, I think people would say there's a housing emergency right now and there's a shortage of units, um, and that's the justification that they use to pass all these things.
I would say, um, go, if you have other questions, and we didn't really get to council roles and. Um, rules and things like that. So feel free to email me. We can kind of accumulate those and schedule Peter to come back another time, do another workshop and go through additional questions. But like it was a good discussion, good questions tonight.
So too, so we'll, we will adjourn the workshop here.
Should we take a couple minute break?
Yeah, a couple minute break. We'll get things started. And then if you're a member of the public and you wish to speak, we have speaker forums over.